Order at 6:00 PM. This is a special meeting for Tuesday, April 27, 2021, to conduct a public hearing on the borough budget. I am wearing my annual budget shirt for the 12th time in a row, and it is a true story. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm expecting Assemblymember Hale. Stephanie, oh, there he is.
Here.
Stephanie Nours.
Here.
George McKee.
Here.
Robert Yunt.
Here.
Moki Tu.
Here.
Jesse Sumner.
Here.
Tam Bovee.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Any changes to the agenda? It's our public hearing for the, our first of three public hearings. Seen and hearing none. The agenda is approved as presented. George Hayes, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience participation. This is your opportunity to speak to the Assembly about any topic. We're particularly focused on the annual budget. If you are on the telephone or would like to speak under audience participation, please hit star three. You will hear it. Your hand has been raised. Everyone wishing to speak has three minutes. I don't see anybody in the audience, so we'll, telephonics on audience participation? Are they on audience participation or public hearing for the budget?
He doesn't know.
Okay. Well, let's go to our telephonics. First caller, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. Identify yourself, state your name, and you're talking under audience participation. Is that what you wanted to do?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll set my timer. Okay, my name is Eugene Carl Hademan. I follow the public process. When the public process is done appropriately, decisions made by the governing body is more likely in a public interest. First of all, I can note, this evening, we're going to have the first public hearing on the budget, and I'll address specific on the budget later and the item on the budget. But the fact is, and concerning, is that when I set the website for a release of the budget Wednesday, then even at a scoreboard meeting, there was a connection that the public couldn't connect to that document. So you have a very narrow opportunity for the public to connect to the most important issue that you have to decide on, the budget, second one is dealing with elections. Second is, I continue to be concerned, I came across attending a planning committee meeting without strongly denouncing my last meeting that the borough is going to loosen the restrictions on wearing masks effective May 1. I put out a request to the administration, which would be by administration, I got a copy of that communication. Yes, you're loosening the mask requirement. But in fact, during the entire time of COVID, you've really been basically having a loose policy of dealing with wearing masks in social businesses. Initially, you closed down the buildings, and you didn't have meetings for the public to attend. Then you reopened, and then you had some degree of concern, but in reality, you traded environment all the way through today and looks like in the future where you're handling COVID irresponsibly. It's not asking much for the people to have a policy, and you have the authority in your own building, the borough building, the people's building, to wear face, to require wearing face covering. Is it just so hard for these people? You're confusing freedom with responsibility, and now you think things are getting better? Let me say this, they are not getting better. The pictures that the world's seeing in India and Brazil and parts of the United States and in the Valley with the high rates that are coming out of the number of cases, it's not getting better, but it is getting worse. There's the lack of respect and concern about this issue. You want to go for money from the Fed to deal with COVID, but you can't simply handle and have a policy to say, when people walk into the borough buildings, you need to wear face coverings, and you need a social distancing. And I don't say much more of this, but when I go about around the borough into businesses, I see that lack of respect. And there's, obviously, you don't have police powers outside of the borough buildings, but you have the authority in those buildings to require that. Enough's enough. Do the right thing. It's costing everyone, everyone including yourself, when you fail to be having a policy of responsibility and show the responsibility and leadership to have people wear masks when coming to the borough buildings and social businesses. Thank you.
Okay, our second telephonic caller. Are you with us?
Yeah, hi, this is Jeremy Houston. I am a voter in District Two. I just, I wasn't going to testify during this section because I also have something to say on the budget portion of the meeting. But I wanted to second what the previous caller said about the file accessibility of the budget document. The file is 90,000 kilobytes, and it's difficult to open, especially with the limited internet access that constituents in the Matthew Borough have. I'm not a tech expert, so I'm not sure how to alleviate that issue, but if the borough could look into figuring out how to make that document more accessible to voters, that would, I think, be beneficial to everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other telephonics? No more telephonics? Did you want to speak to us on the audience participation? Okay, so we will close out audience participation at this time. We have reached the public hearing for the budget. If you're present, you can sign in to speak. We have very few people here with us. If you are calling into the meeting to testify in the budget, please hit star three. Everyone will have three minutes to testify. So we will open the public hearing at this time. Madam Clerk, could you read our legislation into the record?
Ordinance 21-021 and ordinance appropriating monies from the central treasury for the borough operating funds, enterprise funds, education operating funds, and the capital funds establishing the rate of levy for all borough functions for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, and setting the surcharge rate for the wireline and wireless enhanced 911 systems for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at this time. I want to remind the public that we, this is, we will continue public hearings for at least three hearings. The next one will be at Menard Center. What is that, Thursday night, Madam Clerk?
Thursday night at 6:00 PM, Mr. Mayor.
And then we have our third one at Sioux Valley High School on...
I do believe it's May 6, Mr. Mayor, at 6:00 PM.
So we'll have this public hearing open. So anybody in the audience wish to testify? Telephonics? Okay, we have telephonic callers. So let's take our first caller, please, on the budget.
Hello, this is Jeremy Houston again, voter in District Two. I'm here, I'm testifying in opposition to the proposed capital project nomination under the pre-design and engineering section titled the West Houston Access requested by the manager. As mentioned in the item description, $100,000 of the borough capital funds will be used to supplement AID funding of a Phase 3 study regarding the West Houston Mining Road project. I currently understand that there has been no public testimony on Phase 3 of the MOU, nor has the Phase 3 MOU been made available to the public in any way. And please correct me if I'm wrong, on that point, in the second memorandum of understanding, the borough agreed to promote and communicate to the Matthew Borough constituent project updates and engage project stakeholders to ensure an open and transparent public process, and that they would contribute no funds to Phase 2. I understand that Phase 2 is concluded, but I'm operating off of, you know, that being the last public facing document given to the constituents of the borough regarding funding and, you know, previous to this showing up in the budget, and again, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that's how I understand it currently. In this case, I don't believe that the worst criteria is being met at all. And so I strongly encourage the Assembly and Mayor to not appropriate funds, appropriate funds supplementing Phase 3 of the West Houston Mining Road project until there has been an opportunity for public testimony on the Phase 3 memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there another caller? Okay, our second caller, go ahead, please.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Eugene.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, check my timer. My name is Eugene Carl Hademan. Lasted in the West for roughly 43 years. Twenty of those years entered the West and currently evaluate the West for a few decades. The budget, like I said earlier. The link to connect with the budget wasn't working until approximately Thursday of last week. It lasted seven days, the public to connect with that link to look at the budget. And then you're having the first public hearing tonight. Is that a reasonable opportunity to publish it? Definitely not. Also, I'd like to point out, and I've said before, call for a federal investigation, the mismanagement over the years of the court. And in so, at the same time when I said that earlier, I call for a zeroing out of funding of the budget for the port in the trenches. Just end it now. And stop making mousing it away that's disrespectful and is not looking at the public interest at all. Third, I am concerned, and I consider it appropriate, because part of your budget is dealing with advertising, and I don't think it's unreasonable to call the zero-out in funding to the frontiersmen at this time. So I have strongly backed the idea of advertising the notices of meetings, the pictures of the borough, so the people can know when those meetings are respectfully. But the end result is, is a sizable portion of their income, of the frontiersmen, the newspaper in the valley, is coming from the borough. The end result is a serious conflict of interest, leaving a situation that over the years, the frontiersmen have continued to look in an unfair way of reporting, unbalanced, and fearful, I believe, to, if they say anything strongly critical of the operation of the borough, that would put in jeopardy their funding. The end result is, that's why I'm saying tonight, after all these years, it's time to zero out the money to the frontiersmen. They showed a consistent, pretty much consistent way of unbalanced reporting both dealing with school board meetings and the Matthew Borough assembly meetings and what's going on in the Matthew Borough. I end my comments there, and just one other thing. I call for the termination of the borough manager for his mismanagement prior and continued dealing with the Houston School, dealing with the COVID issues, and dealing with, of all things, how this budget was released for the public to see and speak on. Thank you very much.
Are there any more telephonic callers? Okay, we've got a third caller. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Elliot Hunker, last name H-U-N-K-E-R, and I am calling not only as a citizen of the borough, but as coordinator for Telkeetna Community Enrichment, which has for decades been a oral-funded program managed by the school district. For decades, the program has had to persuade the Assembly of its value. For decades, the previous director of the program, Kathleen Fleming, fought for the survival of the program, and now it's my turn. I was notified this week, very politely, and it wasn't a surprise that community enrichment is once again being evaluated before the budget for the next fiscal year. And I am asking the Assembly to please consider the value of what a program like this has in a community like Telkeetna, especially over the course of the last year of quarantine under the pandemic. I'm not only very proud, but I've personally been not just enriched with recreational and educational programming, but touched by the people that I'm able to learn and recreate and gather with. Just this last quarter was the program's most successful quarter in years, and that was under a pandemic. We had dozens of programs offered at next to no cost to the public, and that is invaluable. As far as numbers, 122 participants, individual participants, came to community enrichment programming over the course of January, February, and March. And that's just during school meeting days. So I know that this is not the first time that this Assembly has had to have the very difficult conversation amongst you all about what to do with this program, but I would urge you to please consider to continue to fund this vital program for our community. Thank you so much for the time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any more telephonics? Let's give it a minute or two, see if we have another caller or two.
No, don't get mad.
Okay, well, we'll close out telephonic testimony unless we get a caller real quickly. No callers, okay. Summer Bovee, could you move, continue the public hearing, please?
I move to continue the public hearing on Ordinance 21-021 to April 29, 2021.
Okay, any discussion? Any objection? Hearing no objection, the public hearing is continued to April 29 at the Menard Center in Wasilla, Alaska, 6:00 PM, correct? And I think we will find out that tonight was our easy night, because I think the Menard Center, there were quite a contingent of people coming to testify. Okay, let's go to comments. Mr. Brown had some comments to start with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give the Assembly a couple of updates quickly. The first one's on the budget. So with the approval last week of the NPI agreement by the Assembly, I wanted to call your attention to, in the FY22 proposed budget, there is a line item for $722,000 that's included to provide the Assembly with the option, should you choose to exercise it, to advance to Phase 3, as outlined in the agreement. So very quickly, we are at Phase 1. Basically, the borough receives 100% of all revenues until we receive $722,000. There's no time limit as to the duration of that phase or that allocation. Phase 2, once we receive our 722, the revenues allocated with the borough are allocated with the borough receiving 50% and NPI receiving 50%. And this continues until NPI receives $722,000. Again, no time limit to the duration of that phase. Finally, that would take us into Phase 3, where the revenues are split 80/20, with the borough receiving 80%. This continues for 10 years, regardless of the revenue amounts during that term. So what the 722 does is allows us to advance to Phase 3 of the agreement immediately and begin the 80/20 split for a 10-year period. So essentially, what it does is starts a 10-year clock to completely finish our relationship with NPI. Did I misstate anything, Mr. Attorney? All right. So I just wanted to make sure I called that to your attention in full disclosure, since the agreement was approved last week. So if you saw fit to amend that, just so you're aware, that's out there.
If you don't start the clock, if you don't do the budgeting, what's the time? What's the term?
Yeah, so that, there is no specified, there is no specified term on Phases 1 or 2. You just have to look at the revenue split and track it until you reach those thresholds to go through Phase 1 and Phase 2, and then you would begin Phase 3, which is a 10-year clock. So this could go on theoretically for 20, 25, 30 years. Nick, did you have a comment?
Just to note that, from the legal perspective, just because the money's in the budget does not give the manager the authorization to spend it. There would be a separate item that would be a separate debate at a later time.
But if this money is budgeted, the maximum term is 10 years.
If at a later time you provided payment, then it would start the 10-year clock, but that authorization does not happen through the budget process. I think Mr. Brown is pointing out that the budgetary item is there to have the conversation later, should you so desire.
Right. So the idea of having it in the budget was that the math is already done for you, and you know how it impacts the area-wide mill rate. If you want to remove that, then obviously you could do that through the amendment process. I just wanted to make sure we were forthcoming with that information while it's still early in the process. Okay, I'm going to continue on to another item. So we've had a lot of conversations lately about a road infrastructure package or a road construction package. So what I am proposing, or what administration is proposing, is a special meeting, Assembly Special Meeting on June 22. The clerk will introduce that at the regular meeting next week. The idea is that the June 22 Special Meeting would be solely to discuss a road package and select the size and scope of that road package. We would then, staff would then take that back and draft legislation in July for your consideration, probably at the second meeting in July. So if you were to want to put something on the ballot, you would have plenty of time to do that. We would expect introduction of the package for public hearing on July 20 and public hearing on August 3. That would also leave us a meeting on August 17, if we were to need to continue that and allow for more time to get that legislation approved. The staff, so the staff's going to go out and develop a $60 million base roads package, as well as a list of other projects that the Assembly could consider. So if you didn't like a road that was listed in the base package, you could remove it, potentially substitute it. You could dial it back, you could dial it up. We'll just come in with a starting point for you so that you can look at it and consider it. Staff's going to focus on, the reason I wanted to mention this tonight is we've already set out to start the planning, to put those documents before the Transportation Advisory Board and the Planning Commission prior to June 22, so that there would be some public input in the process prior to it coming to the Assembly for consideration. The idea is that this could potentially go on the ballot as a bond, or there could be potential other revenue options. What we're going to ask the staff to do with the TAB and the PC is focus on the actual projects themselves and not discuss the revenue options. That's really more of an Assembly matter, and the attorney and the finance director will work to draft options for the Assembly to consider, and we'll have those conversations on June 22. So the TAB and PC consideration will be more along the lines of what roads are in, getting those details vetted, and kind of settling on what that base package would include and what other projects might be represented on the list, but we will not focus on how those projects would be funded. We'll have that discussion on June 22 with the Assembly, because I think it would put staff in a pretty uncomfortable situation to talk about different revenue options when we haven't even had that conversation with the Assembly. So I just kind of wanted to lay that out for you. So if you start seeing conversations or agenda items on like the TAB, for example, that's what staff is doing, and that's what we're leading up to. So if you have any comments on that, I guess when it comes to your portion of the comments, please feel free to share those with me. And then, and so the ballot question, and we'll talk about that June 22, how that might be framed. I think the attorney probably will kind of lead us through that conversation and talk about how might those questions be formatted and how we might discuss the authorization to do the work, and then how we might actually go about funding it. Hopefully, that's clear. And then lastly, the investment reports that were requested by Mr. Sumner last week are in your red folder, so I just wanted to call your attention to that. That finishes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Spropolus, comments?
It was a long and grueling meeting, but we made it.
We were pushing hard, weren't we? Madam Clerk? No comments? Mr. McKee, comments? Mr. Tu? Mr. Hale?
No comment, thank you.
Mr. Sumner? Show everybody your cap.
No comment.
Show everybody your cap. Read it to them.
Make plywood cheap again.
I thought that was pretty funny. Miss Nours?
I'll make a comment. On the budget online, I haven't looked at what that's like, but if there is an issue there for the public, if we could take a look at it, if it's, you know, if it means splitting it up into chunks so people can download it, I'm not sure what the issue is there, but if there is one for accessibility, if we could take a look at it. And I guess I just had a question on our road bond package. Do you have any sense if the, some of the federal infrastructure funding that may or may not be coming down, if that would be a potential option? Are we looking at that as a potential option?
Through the, through the mayor to Miss Nours, we will be looking at that, but what we don't want to do is wait for Treasury guidance to start formulating a package, because we'll run out of time to be able to put, because regardless of the funding source, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. wrong, Mr. Attorney, regardless of the source, we will still need the authorization to do it if we do it on an area-wide basis. So it behooves us, based on the timeline, to go ahead and start moving forward so we can get through the TAB and the PC and get something to you in June, and then still leave ourselves plenty of time into July and August, so we don't force this through at the last minute and barely get across the finish line. So that's why we want to focus on the size and scope of the package, and then we'll kind of revisit in mid to late June, the funding options.
Thank you.
Mr. Yad?
The, my son's local hockey team here has won the state tournament and been invited to play in nationals, so I'm going to miss the next couple of meetings doing dad stuff and supporting a local athletic team, but I appreciate the girls, they're going to record the meetings for me so that I don't miss anything, and I just wanted to put that out there on the public record, so, thanks.
Where are they, where's the national meet at?
Michigan.
Michigan?
Yeah, so find out how good Alaskan hockey is.
Good, it'll be fun. Thanks for letting us know about that. I guess this was one of the shortest public hearings for the... Did I, I didn't forget her. Ms. Bovee, go ahead.
Thank you. Did Director Barclay want to speak tonight about what's happening, or are we waiting with that? Yes. Or Lynx Lake? Are we going to wait with that?
Assemblywoman comments.
I know, but I don't want to speak to it if somebody else wants to.
Are you, are you...
Are you ready to just say a word about Lynx Lakes, please? Sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, Assemblymember, Manager, and Staff. Ken Barclay, Director of Emergency Services. I received an email, and so did Assemblymember Bovee. For the residents that live in the Lynx Lake area, we just want to let them know that's in Willow, everyone close to Willow there in Lynx Lake, that they're going to be, State of Forestry is going to be doing a wildland fuels mitigation project there. And we, Stephen Hedman, put it on our webpage so that you can go on there, those for the residents can go on there, and it's going to be a virtual meeting. So we want the residents to know what this forestry is going to be doing in the Lynx Lake area, when they're going to be doing it. They're going to be doing projects to reduce, to help save lives, recreation properties, those that live there permanently as well. So it's going to be a fuels reduction project in the Lynx Lake area. So we just wanted to make sure that the public knew that, and they can go on our webpage, and there's a link there, and you sign up on that link, and then you'll have access for that meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, this is something we've been working on ever since Sockeye, so I very much appreciate the borough and forestry working together on this. This is really important to our community. Thank you.
Okay, I did see that come by from the state of Alaska on Lynx Lake, which is right across the road from me, basically. I think they're going to find a lot of dead spruce out there. So like I was saying, this is one of the shortest public hearings we've had in my tenure of 12 public hearings, but I think we will see a more active bunch at the Menard Center than up at the Sioux Valley High School coming up in our next budget meeting, so I guess we'll just adjourn tonight with that. And I guess I still have a question for the manager. Your $722,000 for NPI. If that is budgeted, and whatever you do have to, you're saying it has to be another ordinance to follow up on that? I guess I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, the, just like when, so in the budget, you've got various capital programs. You have all kinds of funding for programs that could be planned for. Staff has to come back to you to get authorization to obligate the borough over $100,000.
So yes, there would have to be a net, a follow-up.
There would have to be a follow-up, whether it's an ordinance or an AM, you know, we could discuss that.
And if that follow-up ordinance did pass, right, the maximum amount of time for NPI would be 10 years?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I really wanted to know. Okay. With that, we will adjourn at 6:30 PM.